Is on the meeting, do you care if the other commissioners are here?
Everybody's on, are they?
I don't think they are. Oh, they are, Tom.
Cynthia.
David is here.
Tom is, everyone's here.
Okay.
Commissioners, yep.
Okay, we'll call the November seventeenth, two thousand twenty Grand Forks County Commission Meeting to order. Please note for the record that all commissioners are present either by telephone or Zoom. So, the first order of business is the approval of the minutes. You have three sets of minutes before you. November third was the regular Grand Forks County Commission meeting. November ninth at three thirty was a special commission meeting relating to Grand Sky Development. And then on November ninth at four o'clock, we had a special meeting as it related to countywide mask mandate. So, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I so move to approve the minutes.
All right, we have a motion to approve the three sets of minutes. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Thank you very much. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed motion carried. Next item is the approval of the order of the agenda. Is there anything anyone would like added?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Ross. I'd like to add the Cory, the Emergency Manager, to the agenda at five B.
All right, that sounds good. We have a second.
I second the motion, Madam Chair.
Please speak. Further discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed motion carried. Next item.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Falk.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add Mr. Burkholder to the agenda, and I'd like it if we could put him at four D. He's pretty busy today, so he'd like to attend and then leave.
Four D?
D, yeah, after the overtime, or after, you know, the first thing after consent agenda.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second, Dave.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed motion carried. Next item is the approval of the consent agenda. And each of you have received copies of the bill's employee status changes. Overtime, is there anything that you would like pulled for, for the discussion or questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second by Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Further discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed motion carried. Mr. Burkholder, you are up. You unmute, Brett.
How does he unmute?
Can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you.
Okay. Madam Chair, members of the commission, thank you for allowing me to speak to you on such short notice. COVID-19 has been a concern out here for some time. And for the last eight, nine months, we have put in place a protocol following CDC guidelines, of which we isolate our new admissions from our general population in a best attempt to keep, should there be a virus brought into the facility, from keeping it from spreading. Up to mid-October, I would say we were very successful with that, with very limited positive COVID tests inside the facility. Mid-October, approximately the twentieth of October, I would say we did a mass testing in the facility. From that mass testing, we found that we had five positive staff and five positive inmates. Our protocol, when we have that type of information, is to wait another seven days and test again. Reason being, if someone were to be infectious, it's going to take seven to ten days typically for a newly infected person to show signs and to test positive. So, after testing on October twenty-first and twenty-second, we again did another mass testing on the twenty-seventh through the thirtieth of October, where we found two more staff and another six inmates positive. The inmates who are positive, of course, we isolate in cells, and they are not allowed out of their cells for a period of up to ten days, and the staff are quarantined at home as, as is the procedure and the process. On eleven-five, November fifth and November sixth, we did targeting, targeted testing, meaning that we're selecting a specific part of our population in an attempt to determine whether or not we've been able to isolate the virus in the facility. From that targeted testing, we had another fourteen positives. That, again, led us to test again a week later, and we tested again on the thirteenth for another five positives. The vast majority of everyone I've spoken of has spent their ten days in isolation, and as such, according to CDC guidelines and such, shouldn't be a threat. But on Sunday, the fifteenth, two days ago, we did another mass testing of all the inmates. And from that, eighty-five tested positive. They virtually tested positive in, I believe it was sixteen of our twenty housing units. I got that news early, early this morning, and we have been working non-stop, taking and trying to determine what measures we can take in order to house these individuals in accordance with protocol. It is our intent that we will take our positive individuals and, as you would, triage. We are going down the triage list and going to the next step, which is going to be to cohort house positive inmates together, as they cannot infect each other again. We have just got off a meeting with the Department of Corrections, with Dr. Hagan there as well in that meeting, and the purpose of that meeting, which was actually set last week, was to look at our protocols to see, is there anything we're missing? Is there anything we can do better? And I'm happy to report that, as he and the rest of the Department of Corrections looked at our standard protocols, we're doing what needs to be done. So that, that was good news, the affirmation that what we're doing is the right stuff, right efforts. But with North Dakota as the epicenter of COVID in the United States, there is absolutely no way we were going to stop it from getting in the facility. It is here, and it is now our job to minimize it as best we can. And that is what we will put in place as steps to keep people safe and secure. The good news is that of the positive tests, the vast majority of these people are asymptomatic. And those with symptoms range from very minor to mild. Not, I don't want to say that we're taking any of it lightly or anything, but I would just say that that's good news in that we don't have anyone showing signs of respiratory distress or anything like that at this point. It's our goal, of course, is to ensure that we do our best to ensure that others don't get this virus to the best of our ability, to make sure that no one gets infected at our hands as, as best as possible. So that is what's on our plate, and that is what we're doing. And this has been, I don't have notes or anything, this has been very brief to, to get this information to you. So is, if there's questions of the commission, I would ask that you ask them of me now, and I'll do my best.
Thank you, Brett. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Burkholder?
This is Commissioner Falk. Mr. Burkholder, how many people are we still holding for the Department of Corrections that have been sentenced but not transported?
Commissioner Falk, members of the commission, the last I looked at that number, which was last week, it was in the mid twenties. The sad news of that, too, is with the positives here, I did have individuals slated to, to be transported out tomorrow, and some of them have tested positive, so they will not be leaving. So, in short, the, the answer is going to still remain in, in the mid twenties.
My next question is, are there any efforts being made to cut down on new admissions to the Correctional Center?
Commissioner Falk, members of the commission, excellent question. I have been in weekly contact, I would say. It seems like even much more with the state's attorney's office, district court, municipal court, as to measures that we can take to curtail those that are admitted here. And I would say we're having some limited success with that. It, some of the minor offenses, we're not seeing here, which is great, but we just have enough individuals that are being arrested that have a need to be incarcerated, that we haven't seen a drop down to where we were in June, when we got down to roughly a hundred and forty inmates.
What is your population at right now?
We were at two hundred and two yesterday, and I think this morning, one ninety-eight.
Any other questions of Mr. Burkholder? I just have a question, Brett, about staffing and the effects of all of this on staffing and having adequate staffing at the facility. Where are we at with that?
Chairman Knopf, members of the commission, that I would say is one of my equally great concerns. The number of staff we've had out, you know, while, when I gave you those numbers of five here, two there, may not seem like a lot, but what happens is, too often, those are on the same teams. When we were looking at this weekend, because of the situation we have, we had three people unscheduled. Everyone else was out, for whatever reason, between National Guard, military weekends, between COVID, between absences in staff. That's what we were at. The effects of this virus have put undue stress on the staff, without question. They're asked to do a lot, and we've taken on a lot of new, new precautions that make the time to do a task substantially more than it used to be. We have these eighty-eight individuals that are positive right now. We have to do symptom checks on those once every day. So it's taking a toll on staff, and we're trying to, to ramp up with the number of staff we have here, but it, it's not a fast process to get people in, and we're not getting a lot of applicants.
Well, I'm sure that other counties are experiencing similar kinds of situations. So my question is, is that have, if the, if worse came to worse at this point, and, you know, we had issues with staffing, are there chances that some of those inmates may be able to be transported to another facility if worse came to worse?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I hope I'm never coming to you to, to request that. I do have a pandemic protocol for evacuation of the facility. And if it came to a situation that we needed, we could not safely hold individuals here, I would be speaking to you on that regard. Now, we have a joint agreement with approximately oh, twenty facilities throughout the state in the event of a situation. And when, I had this drafted up way back, first when I came to Grand Forks, as an emergency, I saw it as something we should be putting together. I never had a pandemic like this in mind. I was thinking a tornado hits a facility or something to that effect, that they can't house their people. So, our agreement was really drafted with the thought that, you know, if someone had a situation that they couldn't hold people anymore, that we would come together and help them. The pandemic is not unique to Grand Forks. It's happening everywhere. And one of the large issues would be, is where we might bring these individuals. I don't, I haven't done any research to see what vacancies are available throughout the state, but I do know that everyone is putting COVID protocols into place like we are. And you do not want large numbers in your facility. So, I would expect that if we have to do this, it will be a challenge, and we will be moving people a long ways if that were ever to happen. But we'll take every measure we can not to have that happen.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, any other comments or question?
Madam Chair, this is Dave.
Yes, David.
So at this point, do you have any inmates who appear to be close to needing hospitalization?
Commissioner Engen, members of the commission, the good news of all this is that, no, we do not. We had one individual that we took in to have him looked at, and he was released back to us. Symptomatic, yes, but nothing requiring hospitalization. And everyone else, like I said, it goes from more of a mild to moderate symptoms right now. So, we're fortunate in that. But from what I hear from a lot of people is, many people that catch this virus can be asymptomatic, and it's, it's nothing for them. But, of course, we all know the stories and have seen the stories of individuals who are healthy, and it hits them completely different. So, I, I'm not going to bank that, that everyone's going to stay healthy. We're going to do our best to, to keep the virus away from them instead.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay. Thank you, Brett. Sorry that you're having to go through this, and as well as our inmates and staff, and please stay in touch.
Commissioner Knopf and commissioners, if I may, thank, thank you first of all. Yeah, I appreciate that. The other thing that I would say, just to make you aware of, and maybe Ms. Swanson was going to inform you of this as well, but they have been advertising for a nurse out here. And it's not only my staff that are stressed out and everything. It's Ms. Swanson's staff with Public Health. They've stepped up to an unbelievable level to provide care out here. And we can't forget about them and, and what they're doing, because we absolutely need them here. And I applaud everything they're doing and appreciate everything they're doing. So please, think of them as well as it come, as it pertains to out here, because they are, they play a very important role for us.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Okay, anything else for us? It was just informational only, so we'll move on then to the next, and that's Public Health. And Ms. Swanson, are you with us today?
Good afternoon. Yes, I am.
Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Chair and members of the commission, I have just a few updates. I was able to catch Mr. Burkholder's presentation, and I agree with everything that he shared with you in terms of the amount of effort that it takes in a correctional environment to keep the virus out, and then what it takes on a, a day like today to ensure that you are ensuring safety for everybody. So, there's a tremendous amount of effort there on his, on the part of his staff as well as ours. So, thank you. As mentioned, we have had a great deal of difficulty recruiting for another nurse position at the correctional facility. We're continuing to recruit. In the meantime, we're supporting a little bit with some of our existing staff who have supervisory roles anyway with the nurses at the correctional facility. So we're doing the best that we can, and the two nurses we do have there so far are healthy. I just have a couple of other updates. One that's positive, and that's a report that we did hire one nurse for the schools for Emorydo and Laramore. Her name is Angie Bale. She came to us, working in COVID, and has decided she'd like to move over to the school nurse position, and we continue to recruit for the other one, which would be signed, assigned to Mandel and Midway. But in the meantime, our, we have a staff of four that support the schools with contact tracing, answering questions, quarantining and isolating when necessary, and just doing a lot of support to the schools, even though there aren't the nurses on site. So there's a little bit of positive news there. I did send you a couple of documents today. Michael wasn't available for a data update, but we did have his update from yesterday, from last night's city council meeting, which is a little bit of a longer presentation, so you can take your time going through those slides. But the one thing I would say is that, according to our dashboard, we're still in red. We're still severe, and I think we are seeing the effects of that in our testing and what's happened today. If you have questions, I'll be happy to forward them on to Michael to ask of him or have him respond to you via email. The other piece of information that I shared via email today is the zip code information. This is something that's been requested by policymakers to the State Health Department. It's imperfect data, to say the least, because when people register for tests, they don't always include their zip code or the correct zip code. But you can see from that information that there is a little bit of movement from the urban areas out into the rural areas of our county, and we do indeed have cases. This is just a point in time. We get a report once a week on Mondays with the current active cases. So you can see them listed by the various county cities. And the only other thing I have to add is a huge thanks to State's Attorney Haley Womsted for assistance with Dr. Wal's orders that she spent a tremendous amount of time on. I, I also know, Madam Chair, that you were involved, and Tom Ford was involved as well in drafting them, getting them in place. And unfortunately, they were rescinded on Saturday when the governor's orders went into effect. So, Dr. Walz has indicated an interest in reinstating either or, or versions of those orders, should the governors and the state health officers' orders expire in December. And I think that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Ms. Swanson? Hearing none. Thank you for all that you're doing and your staff, and, and please let them know that we are behind them. Keep you in our thoughts and prayers every day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is Cory. Are you with us today?
Yes, ma'am, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. We had another occurrence pop up here that was really unplanned. As you know, we have a great deal of equipment and PPE stored in what they call the raw water building over by the Point Bridge. Came to my attention last week that city engineering is going to be undergoing a remodel, and I think we talked briefly about this last fall. It was postponed with, with COVID, but it's back on the table. So they need to move everything out of engineering. So I'm being evicted from the raw water building. Currently, the EOC is being used as a clean piece app, and as, as you've seen, there's really not much room in there for the amount of stuff we have. I can get, maybe some of the PPE can go over to public health storage facility, but they can't take everything. And we've got about, we've got all of our CERT equipment. We have about a hundred and seventy-five cleanup kits from the Red Cross. So the storage that we need needs twenty-four seven access, and it needs to be climate controlled, because the cleanup kits have liquid bleach in them. Gannon did some research for us on possible independent storage units in Grand Forks. Out of everything that he found, there's only one facility, it'd be five-star storage on Gateway, that would be able to meet those requirements. But I'm looking at right around probably a hundred fifty dollars a month until we find a permanent home. Obviously, that's a little high for my budget, so I am bringing it to you to see if there's any other ideas for funding it, so we can move that stuff out there. They've been somewhat patient, but losing patience. So I got to come up with something here pretty quick. And it's the city building, so I, I have to go.
Good.
Madam Chair, yeah, Madam Chair, this is Tom. Actually, I don't think a hundred and fifty dollars a month, is that, excuse me, is that bad considering it's climate controlled? And it, you know, it is what it is in this times. And I make a motion that we approve renting the climate control facility that she's talking about, and that we pay for it out of, maybe Mr. Ford's got some money in his COVID budget. If not, we'll have to pay it out of our general fund.
COVID.
Mr. Ford.
Chair, I would second that motion.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second to move forward and authorize renting storage space and working with Mr. Ford on that, Cory. So, any other questions or discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed motion carried.
Well, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Cory.
That's all I have, Madam.
Thank you. Okay, next item is county planner. Welcome.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I have two items today. First item is the considered applied application of David Bren for Brent subdivision, system two lots and six point four acres in section twenty-six of Allen Dale Township.
Yep.
Host property is located at the intersection of State Highway fifteen and Fourteenth Street Northeast, which is one mile west of Thompson, for reference. The property currently has one home and a couple of buildings.
I can't hear Elaine. Can anyone else?
Well, I don't hear him either, Commissioner Engen.
I think the host muted all of us. Would that be Mr. Ford?
Can you hear us now, David?
Yes.
Yes. So, did you, did you miss all of Mr. Magnuson's report?
Yes, but I've, I've reviewed the report, so I'm okay.
Okay, I think we'll have you start over if you might, please, just for the record.
Sure, sure.
Sorry.
First request is an applied application of David Bren for Brent.
First request is an applied application of David Bren for Bren subdivision, consisting of two lots and 6.4 acres. The property is located at the intersection of State Highway 15 and 14th Street Northeast, which is one mile west of the city of Thompson. The property currently has a home and a couple of outbuildings located on it. Surrounding land uses are agglans and rural residences under our land use plan. It's within our rural residential area. The subdivision request does conform the goals and policies of the land use plan. Under zoning ordinance, it's within our rural residential single-family district, which is our two-and-a-half-acre lot development area. And the proposed lots do meet performance standards of the zoning district. As far as the background, the applicant proposing split the existing parcel basically in half to accommodate another dwelling on the property for their elderly parents. The existing access to State Highway 15 would be shared by the two lots. There would be no additional accesses. The Allen Dale Township Board recommended approval of the request. Staff has no issues with the request, and the Grand Forks County Planning Commission recommended approval at their November 10 meeting. With that, I would recommend approval of the plat, and we have any answering questions?
Thank you, Mr. Magnusson. Commissioners, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Magnusson? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I would move approval of the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
The next item I have is considered the application of Barbara Robinson to replat Lot 1 of Keynes Acres in Section 23 of Bren Township. The subject lot is 27.15 acres. It is located approximately seven miles, or seven miles southwest of the city of Grand Forks. The property currently has one home and a couple of outbuildings located on it. Surrounding land uses consist of agglans and rural residences again. This one is also within our residential, rural residential area according to the land use plan. And the replat request does conform the goals and policies of the plan. Under zoning ordinance, it's also located within our rural residential single-family district. And all the lots and building envelopes do conform with the performance standards in that district. As far as the background, the applicant is requesting to split the existing lot into three parcels ranging in size from 7.15 acres to 10 acres. Lot A on the plat would have the existing house on it. Lots B and C would be vacant. Bren Township Board recommended approval of the request. The staff, as far as staff comments, there are no real issues with it. Lot A has an existing access to the township road. Lots B and C are more than large enough to meet our 660-foot access spacing requirement, which would enable them to have their own access. Other than that, it meets all the performance standards of the zoning and subdivision resolution. And the Grand Forks County Planning Commission also recommended approval of the request after November 10 meeting. And with that, I would recommend approval.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Magnusson?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
This is Dave. I recommend approval.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second, Tom.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Magnusson.
Thank you.
Next item for discussion is the COVID restart. And I'm not sure, Michelle, are you presenting that?
HR. So Chairman Nock and Commissioners, I'm Michelle Field, Director of HR. And I'm here to present a telecommuting policy and agreement form that State's Attorney Womstead and I have been working on. We put this together, and the policy has a dual purpose. It provides a framework for department heads to have a consistent policy to follow regarding allowing or requiring employees to work remotely and to fulfill the requirements that Kari Gels, the emergency manager, has for the COOP plan. The COVID recovery team, as well as the county department heads, have each had the ability to review the attached policy. The key pieces are that the department heads have reached out over the last several months indicating that they really wanted something in writing that they could call back on that gives some clear guidance when dealing with telecommuting, whether it's a request from employees or whether it's a business need of the county. And they wanted to have something that could be consistent. And this is, this policy is consistent with how the state of North Dakota and other major counties in North Dakota are handling remote work agreements. The department head will have the final decision as to whether or not the position or the employee would qualify. HR is responsible to provide guidance and just support to ensure that the policy is handled appropriately under all governmental regulations, whether it's ADA, FMLA, workers' compensation, and also to be sure that it is applied fairly consistently. The policy could be used in a variety of situations, such as our current pandemic, other emergency situations, also as transitional work for injured employees, reasonable accommodations under the ADA, or in the future, if the need arose to hire employees, that would be working remotely. If you have any questions, I would be open to those, or I'm sure that Haley would also be willing to answer any questions. What we are requesting is that you would approve the policy. It has been brought forth to all the department heads and have an effective date of 11/18/22.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the request. Do you have any comments or questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd make a motion to approve the policy.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Tom.
Thank you. You have a motion in a second. Is there any further comments or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Field and Ms. Womstead, for all your hard work on that. It was a very nice document, so.
Thank you. And there's one just piece of information that I'd like to bring to the commission that has to do with COVID.
Absolutely.
Currently, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act is in place that gives extended family medical leave and extended paid sick leave for employees. I just want you to be aware that that is scheduled to be, to expire December 31st. We don't know with the current federal administration whether or not it will be extended. Anything along those lines currently in the county? We are covering people with the job protection and incorporating it along with paid administrative leave. As soon as I have a little more information, I'll get that out to you. But it is something that we will need to determine how we want to handle COVID-related absences following or after December 31st. There's no action to be taken today, because we don't know anything yet today. But I just wanted to get that on the radar, because 12/31 will be here quicker than we think.
Thank you very much for the heads up. We appreciate it. Appreciate all that you do. Okay, next item then is Director of Administration, Mr. Ford.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. The first thing I have is a contract extension request. The current contract between the county and our base retention advisors, VM Finley Consulting, expires December 31st of this year. And so I'm bringing before the board tonight a request to extend their contract for another 12 months. So it would go into effect January 1st, 2021, and expire December 31st, 2021. The VM Finley is better known to all of you as Lieutenant General Rusty Finley and Lieutenant General Bill Rue, each retired. General Finley, former Vice Commander for Air Mobility Command. General Rue, former Vice Commander for Air Combat Command. They've been with us since 2014, and they have proven their worth time and time again. Some of the successes we've had with them as our advisors is keeping a lot of our old, I'll just use acronyms, the Air Force Doc, old AMC infrastructure, the old tanker days, keeping a lot of the infrastructure going, advising us on how to convene with our congressional delegation on doing that. We were realigned from Air Mobility Command to Air Combat Command a few years ago. You'll probably remember that. And then, for the first time after losing the tankers, we got a new mission in Global Hawk Mission. They've done quite a bit for us. They've also helped elevate Grand Forks community and the airbase's stature in the Air Force, going from where's Grand Forks again to, yeah, we know Grand Forks. You guys are seconded and done for community support. So they've done a good job in helping steer the community in all those different areas. They've done a lot of work, but there's still a lot more work to do, most notably, future missions, whether that's in Space Force, whether that's in the Arctic Mission, whether that's in more RPAISR missions. We don't know. As you all know, the Block 20s and Block 30s of the Global Hawk have been offered up to be divested. Luckily, the Senate has put in some place, put in place some roadblocks for the Air Force to retire those. That would be three-quarters of our fleet, just so you're aware. And so Congress has put in some roadblocks to prevent that from happening. And that includes the Air Force going to Congress saying, "Okay, this is the new system. We'll replace the blocks with if we retire." So we've been, we have some more time. So we're gonna need our advisors to help us navigate those waters as well. Currently, their contract is an eight-month, or I'm sorry, an $8,000 a month retainer. So that's $4,000 apiece. And then we've always budgeted $30,000 for travel. Some examples of their travel has been here to Grand Forks to meet with all the water stakeholders and partners in airbase leadership. Pentagon, many of us here have gone on many trips with them out to the Pentagon or Air Combat Command or Air Mobility Command. Northcom is now a big one that we as a community should be visiting with and have been visiting with, with the Arctic Mission and our geographical location of our base and how important that is. Some other places is 16th Air Force in Texas, which is our parent air force, and then Air Education and Training, where we're buying, trying to get some training missions here as well. So they put out a lot of miles with us. We go with them. So the, unfortunately, historically, we have funded their contract through the state-provided base retention grant. As you're aware, in 2019, the legislature did not provide any more base retention funding. Their logic was no threat of BRAC, which is... I mean, let's just say there's always a threat of BRAC, always. And by the time a BRAC would be announced, it'd be too late for us to respond if we're not continually responding. As you all know, we've been through five BRAC rounds already. And so we have to look at funding, I would be requesting the board fund their contract by the county, because the state money's about to run out. Currently, there is $47,430 remaining of the state grant money. I, from the Director of Administration's budget, I have $22,000 remaining in my base retention budget, that I budget. I've been using my general ledger base retention to pay for the contract the last couple of months to try to extend the state money for as long as I can, till we come up locally with a solution. This would take us, my general ledger would take us through the remainder of 2020, so we're not touching the remaining state money of 2017. Then, starting in January, the $47,430 would be used to continue paying the contract if the board decides to extend it. And so my request is that the board approve a 12-month extension between the county and VM Finley Consulting LLC, approving $86,000 for their monthly retainer and travel to be paid from cash carryforward. And I did discuss this with Ms. Nelson. So I, basically what I would do is I would use up the remainder of the state money, January, February, March, April, and May. And then if the board approves it, the $86,000 would carry the contract for the rest of the year. So that's my request and recommendation. And I'll also maybe just defer to Commissioner Falk and Egan as well. I know they've worked closely with the generals, and they probably have some thoughts. Commissioners?
Well, I agree with, this is Tom. I agree with Mr. Ford that we need to continue the consulting contract with these gentlemen. They've proved invaluable for the county. And of course, with the uncertainty of the Global Hawk fleet right now, that really puts our base at a somewhat of an uncertain level also. It's a great base, and hopefully they would find another mission, but there's never a guarantee for that. So I think we need to have our views expressed to the military as often as we can and from qualified people, and that would be Generals Rue and Finley. So I support what Mr. Ford is proposing. And just as a side note, we actually had it in our budget last July when we were budgeting and thought it wasn't going to be needed. But obviously, things changed in the interim. And so Mr. Ford pulled it out of his budget in order for us to have a more friendly budget, I guess. So just didn't work out.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Nothing to add except to say I agree with Tom and Tom.
Okay, so do I have any other comments? Questions?
Just one with, with the legislature meeting next year, would we be going before them at all to ask for that money for BRAC retention?
Commissioner Rost, that's a dog, that's a dog that just isn't gonna hunt right now.
Okay. Okay.
Hi, Madam Chair, Commissioner Ross. I did bring that to the acting interim director of commerce, Mr. Kessel. And what I've been told is he put in money for base retention for 2021, and it was pulled out. We are on our own.
Just as a side note, Commissioner Ross, our county, I think, is the only one that considers or feels that we're in peril. Barbara was not concerned about the air guard and Minut with their missile wing, which is not gonna be moved. They don't have any concerns either. So we're kind of on our own. And I think the state's position is if, you know, they either support all or just, or nobody. And so right now, it's nobody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So the motion then is with the 12-month extension then with the consultants moving $86,000 a month retainer and travel, paid out of cash carryover with chair signature?
Correct.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chair. Oh, that's fine.
Who seconded?
Who seconded?
Tom.
Okay, thank you. For the discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only other item I have for the commission's attention is the, are the 2021-2022 Grand Forks County legislative priorities. This, this document which you received was compiled by, by working with the North Dakota Association of Counties, the North Dakota League of Cities, and the Chambers Team Grand Forks, which is where our institutional partners, we get together and discuss our top legislative needs to carry that forward with one voice. And it's also been shared with department heads, and they gave you some good feedback. And the Legislative Committee chaired by Commissioners Falk and Egan, we approved it already. And so I'm just looking for a comments, questions, requests of the board, but ultimately looking for the commission to approve these as our final legislative priorities. And if the, if the commission does, I would then share them with our institutional partners. I would share them with our area legislators. And if the Commission does, I would then share them with our institutional partners. I would share them with our area legislators and the Association of Counties. I never want to do that until this board has reviewed and approved them officially.
Any questions of Mr. Ford? Do I have a motion to approve?
I would move approval.
Would you approve? I'll second it.
Excuse me. We have a motion in a second then to approve the legislative committee or to move over it with the legislative issues. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. State's Attorney.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I do not have anything other than what was on the meeting notice pertaining to an executive session pursuant to Sentry Code Sections 440419.1 and 440419.2 related to attorney consultation on tax year 2017 abatement appeal litigation.
Thank you. May I have a motion to temporarily recess the regular Grand Forks County Commission meeting?
So moved.
And convene an executive session?
That's it.
Okay. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
A roll call vote on that one, I'm sorry. Commissioner Ross?
Aye.
Falk?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Did I miss? No, aye. P. Page, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so the motion passed, and so we'll now move into executive session and for discussion
at a moment now.
The topic. I just want to say for those individuals who are participating by telephone or on Zoom that we will wipe by telephone. You'll not be placed into a visitor's room until we resume the regular scheduled commission meeting again. So, and if you're physically present, which we have no one. So we are good to go Facebook and YouTube, Twitter would all be turned off while we're in the executive session. And Mr. Ford's going to take care of that and go advise us when that's been accomplished. Yes, you have to leave.
So there is no view in the audience?
I'm sorry, you're invisible. Yes, I'm sorry. You are somebody.
And I don't usually come through that one.
Yes, you do.
Tom? Mr. Ford?
Yes.
I think you excluded